Let's get our North East Town Council Thursday, February 11th. Meeting started and I like to start off with opening the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would love, love for Mickey, the new daddy to lead us and he can take over from here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mickey. Roll call.
I'm getting it. Mayor Benton?
Here.
Greg Dotson. I see him. He raised his hand. Mickey Hummel.
Here.
Perfect. Gwen Chieta. Jane Hagan. Elizabeth Lawton. And Paul Tronkun.
Here.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move right into approval of the agenda. I need a motion to prove the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Let's move into the minutes of the January 14th, 2021 Town Council Meeting. Motion to approve the minutes from the January 14th, 2021 Council Meeting as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Uh, let's move to a motion to approve the minutes from the February 4th, 2021 Work Session. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So Earl, this didn't take long, buddy. Can we unmute Earl? At the bottom there? Well, at least the bottom on my screen.
Is he the XT1585? Is that?
Uh, no. Uh, um, what is it? Winifred Day?
That's Earl. Okay.
Yeah. Right next, next door to Mr. Russo there.
Everyone's screen looks different.
I don't care. It's right there. It's right there. It's where Bobby Brady would be sitting right now. Not really. I have no clue.
There he is.
Oh, there he is. Hey, Earl, how you doing, buddy?
All right.
Good, good. Listen, this won't take long, but first of all, I'd like to start off by saying thank you so much. Um, I, I, I went to Earl's house last week and said, I need your help. We were, we gotta get the North Beach Ethics Commission back up and, and going and, and, um, I convinced them that he got fed at all meetings. So, um, I hate to tell you, Earl, the truth is you don't, but that's okay. Um, but he volunteered. He said he would. He looked forward to getting aboard. So Earl, I need to swear you in and we'll do our best with the Zoom to swear in. It's kind of difficult. So just be patient with me. So where, where'd you go? Oh, there you are. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Earl McDaniels.
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you swear I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
That I will, uh, bear allegiance to the state of Maryland. True allegiance.
And I, well, you know what? I kind of messed up here. Um. Earl, I'm extremely apologetic for what I need. I need to, um, I gotta get the, I gotta get the council to vote you in first. I'm so excited that you're doing it. I totally skipped over it halfway through. I realized I screwed up. So I apologize. It's on camera, but I apologize. Um, everybody, this is Earl McDaniels. For all of y'all, I think everybody knows him. Uh, that's on the council for the most part. Um, he lives right over there behind Taste and Freeze. Hey, Earl, how long have you lived in, in North Beach?
Since eighty, eighty-one or eighty-two.
So you remember, um, well, way before Mickey was running around. Um, but anybody have any questions for Earl? Um, and then we'll need a motion to appoint Earl and then I'll swear him in. So I apologize.
For volunteering.
You're welcome.
Move, move to appoint Earl McDaniels to the North Beach Ethics Commission.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go backwards, guys. I apologize. All right, Earl, we'll start this over again. Um, I state your name.
I, Earl McDaniels.
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
To the state of Maryland?
The state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill?
And I will, to the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
North Beach Ethics Commission?
North Beach Ethics Commission.
According to the Constitution, the laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Thank you so much, sir. We anoint you. You're on it. So listen, stay tuned, Stacy and, um, I, I, I know we had this conversation with Alyssa, but you'll be getting, uh, they will reach out to you soon to come together. It'll probably be a Zoom call.
Okay.
To get everything going. We got a lot of work to do and, uh, but stay tuned. You'll hear from the other uh, two commission members and also Stacy and, and at first it'll be Alyssa, our attorney. So you have any questions for us?
No, I'm ready.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Earl. You have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
All right, guys. Sorry about that. I was, I'm ready to bring him in. Getting volunteers sometime is tough. Um, let's go right into the public safety report. And who, who's, who's going to be speaker man this?
Are you talking to me, mayor?
Yes, are you gonna, um?
Yeah, I was gonna introduce our new sergeant, uh, Gary Schroeder. Um, he's filling, uh, Tom Phelps's shoes and, uh, I personally selected this guy. He's, um, he's on the, on the call here. Um, he's been on with the sheriff's office for about eighteen years. He's got a lot of experience and, uh, I look forward to working with him up here in the beach. So Gary, I don't know, uh, if you can hear us, if you want to say a couple of words.
Yeah. How you doing? Um, welcome. Uh, I'm glad to be here and happy to be here. Can't wait to get started. I've, uh, got about a week under my belt so far. Uh, I joined law enforcement back in nineteen ninety-seven in DC and I joined sheriff's office in two thousand and four. Uh, I've been a patrol deputy for, for my whole career. I was a corporal for several years and I'm about four, a little bit over four years as a sergeant under my belt. So, uh, I got a canine dog, a drug dog, so he'll be riding around with me, barking at everybody. Um, but he's a, he's, he's a very nice. He just sounds mean, but he's nice and I can't wait to get going and get this, uh, ball rolling.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
You're welcome, Gary.
So the town report for January is, is in the attachment both the council have had and the public has have, uh, has had. Does anybody have any questions for, um, Lieutenant and Gary? Nope. All right. Thank you so much for attending, guys.
Yep. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, let's move right into uh-oh, the treasure, uh, report. Uh, Joanne's on here. Yep, there she is in the middle. Well, at least on my, my screen.
Hello. Um, reporting period is December first through December thirty-first. The general fund beginning balance was one million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. Total devots was fifty-five thousand and total credits was three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Ending balance was one million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand in the general fund checking. The MLGIP fund, general fund was two million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand. The sewer capital was eighty-nine thousand and water capital was forty-three. Total cash available to the town of North Beach for the month of December was four million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. We received no hotel tax revenue during, uh, December and no state business license revenue during December.
Anybody have any questions for Joanne? All right. Thank you so much, Joe.
You're welcome.
All right, DB. DB's been out there. You see, um, you see the roads going on two sixty-one. We have a lot of activity around town. So DB, you have anything you'd like to pass on to everybody? His report is attached. So if you, uh, again, you have an opportunity to take a look at that, but do you have anything important you would like to pass on, DB?
Yeah, congratulations to Mickey first off. You, uh, you thoroughly enjoyed that, I'm sure, or a lot of fun coming up. Um, yeah, uh, and some exciting news actually yesterday for a lot of residents in town. They actually set the beams for the bridge on two thirty-one. I mean, two sixty-one. I'm sorry, I live on two. And you can actually, uh, don't, don't anybody try to drive, but you can actually walk across now to the Rose Haven side once again. So the road is, you know, everything's in. They set the beams, um, you know, hadn't done any, they got a little, you know, right much work to do yet. Another month at least on the, uh, the sides of the bridge, you know, pouring the walls, tying in to final times, but they did set the beam. So that is great news. Um, even though the weather hadn't been cooperating the last week for them, they had, you know, pretty good weather up to now, but, um, I'm looking for them to finish, you know, the, the, uh, completion date is May and I'm pretty sure they're going to make that date. So I know a lot of people will be happy about that. They can shoot through there again instead of going around. So I think that will come in on schedule.
Well, thank you so much. Um, obviously his report is there, plus you'll see in the state of the town that I give later on tonight. A lot of work that DPW has been working on. Any questions for DPW or DB? No? All right. Thank you so much, DB.
Thank you.
Uh, Rick is not able to attend tonight. So, uh, his report, uh, is late coming, but he, we will get it, uh, for you and get it uploaded. Uh, hopefully within the next, you know, day or two. So stay tuned for that. He's been, he has a lot of projects he's working on. Uh, good news is, is Donnie Croto has come back to work, uh, after his, his, his pretty bad motorcycle accident. So you'll start seeing him around more. So that's exciting news. I know Rick's looking forward to having help there. So that's great news. Marketing, Dawn, is there anything you'd like to pass on before later on today when we hit your forty-one pages of love?
Forty-seven, I think.
That's right. That's right. Forty-seven.
Um, no, I haven't. My report's not uploaded, but I will do that and upload it later. Um, I have been working a lot on the state of the town and revisiting the whole year of twenty twenty. So that was kind of interesting. Um, we got a lot done in twenty twenty, even though we were, were and are going through a pandemic. So, um, I promise I'll get my report uploaded soon. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, Joe. I mean, thank you, Dawn.
Yep.
Uh, Lisa. Would you like to pass on to the council and to the residents, plug it in tonight?
Excited report that we're working on finishing up the Keep Maryland Beautiful grant. I have all the information, getting it together for Joanne. I've been working with some volunteers, uh, John and Elizabeth on getting trees for the residents. So that is something we'll be rolling out closer to Earth Day, but we're going to be ordering trees and giving them out to them. And the other exciting news is we invited the tree committee, the new tree committee, to our last environmental committee meeting so that everyone could meet each other. And it was a good way to introduce them. Mr. Poole came and Ms. Crowell, right?
Crowell.
And so that was very exciting to have them come on board. Looking forward to that for this year. That will get, maybe it'll get to be a tree city again.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for Lisa before we move on? Her report is also attached, both for the council and for all resident or anyone that wants to plug into the, the board docs. All right, let's move into item six. We'll make sure, you know, I like to jump around, so make sure I'm on all track here. Let's move into public comments. We do have some, a lot of people on the call tonight. The town of North Beach welcomes public comments. Please state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, you can raise your hand. Um, you can put a message in the, uh, chat box and then Paul Tronkun, uh, council member will be able to answer or handle that.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't see anything in the chat at the moment. Um, we can, we can move forward and always circle back if, if it comes in.
All right. Now we're gonna move into or the business side of it. We can move into ordinance and resolutions. And then we'll go right into state of the town, which will, it is forty-seven pages. But all wonder, you'll be amazed how much got done last year. I will not read every line. Don't worry. Uh, so we have in front of us tonight, which we discussed at the work session, resolution twenty-one dash zero one. A resolution declaring a moratorium on issuance of business license. It is attached into your file. And what, I'm gonna go ahead and, well, I guess whoever can make, I'll make the motion. But a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one dash zero one as presented, and I'm gonna read it because Alyssa's on the call. Um, just teasing. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of North Beach declare a moratorium for a period of six months on the issuance of business license in order to allow the town to review its licensing, uh, scheme to ensure that it is fair and equitable and supports the development of the town in a manner most conducive to the public health, safety and welfare and the town's financial wellbeing. So we discussed it in depth at the work session. Today, we need a motion to adopt the resolution so we can get the planning commission to start rocking and rolling, which they already been notified, but do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-one dash oh one.
You have a second?
Jane's trying to talk.
I'm sorry. I apologize. So Jane? Hold on.
I think she may have a question.
Yeah.
No, I wanted to mute, but I couldn't do it. Now I can.
Right.
Paul blocked me out.
All right. Jane, are you seconding? I apologize. Okay, so we have a first, we have a second. Any discussion?
I have, uh, just a, a comment on the, just on the verbiage. I'm just wondering, um, if it should read for a period of up to six months? Because it sounds so, because we might get this work done sooner. I don't, maybe that doesn't matter, but that did catch my eye that it's, sounds like it's a moratorium for six months, but don't we really mean for a period of up to six months?
Alyssa's unmuted.
So you need to have an outside time in this resolution. You can, of course, always lift it earlier, but the resolution needs to have a firm time on it.
Okay, so we can leave it like that and it's implied that it could be dealt with.
The goal is to do it faster. Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. It just sounds, it's just sounded like it should say for up to versus for six months.
No, great question. Any other questions from the council? All right, so we have a first and a second. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have, I don't.
I don't see Greg.
Greg is muted.
Greg.
All right, so we got, we, we got Jane, we have Gwen, we have Mickey, we have Paul. Um, Elizabeth's not here and Greg is muted.
Like he's unmuting. I think he's just got unmuted.
There we go.
I'm here.
You good?
Yep.
Okay, cool. So we have, uh, we have five guesses and then we have one that's not here tonight. So.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll get it published tomorrow.
All right, so we're gonna move into you know, I have the easy part. Um, this, this is uploaded to board docs. Um, the state of town is on our website. It'd be, I mean, we will, we will get it out as we do everything in this town to make sure everybody has a chance to listen to or read it. Um, but as I was going through it and I had the pleasure of going through it over and over again with Dawn, um, I cannot stress how proud I am of the residents and of the staff, the council. We did a lot. We've been, we've been, we've been in this state of emergency for three hundred and thirty-six days as of today. And our town did not stop at all. There were still a lot of accomplishments. There was still a lot of work that got done. Uh, flip the page, Paul. I apologize. I, I just want to stress one thing. When I was interviewed by Fox Five, I, I had a quote that said, and at the end of the day, we're going to continue to err on safety. I'm very proud of our town because there are so many locations and locales and counties and, and towns and cities that flip flop. They went back and forth, back and forth based off the peer pressure or pressure out there. We all agreed as a, a elected body that we're going to focus on safety. We knew it's going to be painful. We knew there's going to be some challenges, but we never backed down. And, um, I'm proud to hang my hat on that. And when you look at some of the items that we, we have gone through this year and you know, we're gonna get a lot more done, but you know, we do have restraints because of this. I mean, we're all sitting at some other location instead of inside of our amazing town hall right now. We hung this banner that you see there, North Beach Strong on, on, on the front of town hall because I truly believe North Beach is strong. You know, we focused on the residents, the safety and movement forward, but we responded. We did not react. There's a huge difference between reaction and responding. We met a month before this went down. Uh, council member Tronkun said, hey, we need to talk about this virus. And we did. And, um, I can't, I, I can't say how much, how proud I am of, of everybody. So go ahead and flip it. So the next five or six pages, it's about COVID nineteen. You can flip it. This is just the first month. And again, le, as leaders, we responded. We did not react. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't back down. We stuck with what we thought was right. There was no right or wrong answer. It's what you thought. Nobody's ever, at least nobody I know lived through this recently. This is the first month what we did. Um, you'll see as we go through here, we made it a priority that we communicated, we are transparent and that our residents in our guests or our town knew what we were doing. There's no way for somebody to say, I didn't know. There's, there's zero way between the emails, the social media ads, the, the, uh, text messages, the website, the, the, the blink and sign up off of two sixty. We did everything we could to educate. Go ahead, Paul. So prevent the spread, continue to encourage citizens to prevent the spread. We did the best we could and I think most, I think people stepped up. It was tough. It was, nobody understood it. Um, but the residents stepped up. Go ahead, Paul. We created instantly, Dawn jumped on this quick, created a COVID nineteen resource center on the town website. And we did our best. If you remember and you still remember, Wednesday, the governors would come out, the governor would come out with something and say by Friday, this is going into effect. I mean, we were scrambling to make sure that the education got out to the residents, got out to our guests. You can see our press releases. It's well documented. I was getting phone calls from other municipalities because they were signed up to receive our outreach and they were impressed with how staff got the information, transmitted it, made it so you could understand it. Next page, Paul. Digital communication. I, I, I want, this is going to be talked about a couple of times. If you look at the middle screen says, sorry, beach is closed. Business, businesses are open. From day one, we made sure any marketing, any, anything we did, we let people know our businesses are open. Now, some were shut down because of the governor's mandates. They were restricted, the time restrictions, but the point is at any opportunity, we made sure that everyone knew the businesses were open. We never lacked with that. Go ahead, Paul. Again, supporting our residents. One of the things that you'll see is that this is resident information that went out on a regular basis. It went out as much as needed. Sometimes it was weekly, sometimes it was bi-weekly, sometimes whatever it got to. But they were updated, but we also had the same going out for businesses. We had the signs around town. If you're in need or if you'd like to volunteer, I would say we had ninety-nine percent of the people that called and don't quote, it was about volunteering. We, we had very few people say they were in need based off of this sign. This sign was in every location of the town of North Beach. It wasn't just at one location. All right, Paul. Uh, I want to do a shout out to our neighbor in town, uh, town of Chesapeake Beach. Um, I, I had many conversations with Mayor Mahoney, uh, with the town, with their town council, but also with their town administrator, Holly Wall, to make sure that we were on the same page, what we were doing, what they were doing, what they saw, what they thought and so forth. So I, I cannot thank Mayor Mahoney enough for being there. Um, he, he was a wealth of information. He plugged into the mayor, uh, the governor's conference every Friday. Uh, so it was great to be able to plug it to them, our, our, our county commissioners, the state of Maryland. This was a team effort. So I cannot give enough kudos out. All right, Paul. Supporting town businesses. We updated them on any type of incentives, any type of funding, any type of grants, any type of anything. They, there was never a time that our town businesses were not being updated. Not one time, not one time did we not say, hey, did you hear about this? Let the businesses know. We did everything we could to support them when they had to get to think outside of the box, when the restaurants had to think outside of box. And I'm not saying this to give us kudos. What I'm trying to pass on is that our town staff really stepped up to make sure they did the best they could. It wasn't me. Uh, uh, you know, it was my leadership, but at the end of the day, it was me working with them. They're doing it. It was their ideas. We worked as a team with all of this information. All right, Paul. On this page here, what you'll see, some of the out of the box thinking, and I think one of the clear ones is down here on the left-hand side, where Wes Long has said perhaps BYO blanket, bring your own blanket. That was pretty funny. They, they had the heaters outside, but it's still a little nippily out there. You saw Mexico with their tent, um, a lot of carryout at, at the hook, Sweet Sues and since then, obviously Sweet Sues, um, the previous owners, uh, the new owners took over January one. Um, you got the, the, the new owners of the, the wheel, uh, plus all the others, the soap, the, the ice cream, um, the wine store, all the other stores had to think outside the box and, and we like to say they pivot. They did a phenomenal job. They're still pivoting, guys. We're far from being out of this, but the businesses pivot. Uh, next one is the food drives, uh, the ladies of charity and the boys and girls club. The numbers are off the hook, what they were able to accomplish throughout this whole pandemic. They supported each other. They supported the community. And there's a lot of families that had food and continue to have food throughout this pandemic because of these two organizations. They worked tirelessly to make sure this happened. We, we can't be prouder of them to being in our community. All right. The seniors, obviously the senior building was closed down, the Calver County Senior Building, but they still were able to do a couple of things. Drive-by celebration, National Seniors Day. You can see that we had that on our sign. They had a senior only Halloween drive-through um, where they, they get to drive through, get their candy. It was just a great, and seniors did the best they could with what they were given. And they stepped up. They thought outside of the box. Next. We were doing our best to come up with ideas for people to stay at home, to do things. The two top are the, the backgrounds that Calver County used on their Zooms. And down below is a lot of the marketing and ideas that came through, through Lisa and Dawn and other staff members to get out to the public and the public had ideas. So we were constantly trying to support our community. All right, Paul, let's put in that one. All of this is in there. I'm on page fifteen. Don't worry. Getting a job done through a pandemic. We also had to pivot. Luckily, we're blessed and a lot of stuff that we pivot to was already on the, was already on the agenda. The transition to Microsoft three sixty-five, the VoIP call. So when you call, we don't have the staff at town hall, but you wouldn't know that because there's one of four people going to answer that call for you. Uh, emails, um, the whole system was revamped. It was already in the process, but it just got pushed through to help us make sure that we were here for you. Resolution, we passed one resolution twenty dash oh four uh, for the town of North Beach to stand up against racial discrimination, social injustice. What I will tell you What I will tell you is that this was passed, but it's far from over. It's not even remotely over. You know, we want to get more movement as we continue to go through COVID and get out of COVID with events, educational events. People coming together, working together to make sure that the town of North Beach stands up above everybody else. This was just the start. I'm very proud that we did this part, but we're far from where we want to get to. And you'll see more in the coming months. And as we get through this pandemic and we're able to open up, people have vaccines and it's safer to be around. Calvert Library, Twin Beach's branch. This is a rendering. Scheduled site work to start September 2021. It's state of the art. It is being constructed by Calvert County in support of the town of North Beach. You can go to their website to see more. We had a couple, and again, I, I don't know the exact number. I think it was two or three public comments. We had meetings. And we're coming down to the wire now, and they feel very confident that the site work will start September 2021. They think it's going to take 18 months for the construction phase of it. We will see. I'm excited. It's going to bring so much value to the town of North Beach. The 261 roadway, roadway reconstruction. I've had the pleasure of walking up a little bit, not up where the construction guys are, but little, little bit ways up there. It looks gorgeous what they've done. It's only getting better every time I walk up by there. And what DB or Department of Public Works said today was they set the, the, the spans. I'm not going to say they're ahead of schedule because then I'll be quoted and then I'll be wrong. All I'm saying is that they're moving along great. And it's looking great so far. So stay tuned. We look forward to that. That may be being a ribbon cutting that we can open up that place. The census. Yes, I was framed. I was wrong. I want to recount. I did lose a friendly wager to the mayor of Chesapeake Beach. But I'm very proud of what we did do. 2020 self responses for North Beach was 68.1. That's self responses that, that they initiate on their own. That doesn't mean total responses because if census persons came to your house, that is not counted in this number. Chesapeake Beach was at 76% again. So we had a little friendly wager between us and I'm going to be treating them to a dinner at a North Beach restaurant. But at the end of the day, the goal was to get awareness. We need these numbers. Matter of fact, if you don't understand why the census is so important, think about the vaccines right now. The vaccines are based off of the census numbers. So we need real census numbers to make sure our residents are taken care of. So for those who participated, thank you so much. Banner art competition. You notice these were along the waterfront. We ran a contest. They were voted on. The artists had their work displayed and then they were given the work. This is pretty cool. I think we're going to see more of this in the coming years. But it's, it's another way to tie in the community, the art community to the town of North Beach. The next one is Jack's World. If you don't know what Jack's World is, you might want to Google. It's probably the most famous dog other than Lassie or Rin 1010 for us old people. Making you want to know what that was, but that's okay. Maybe not even Paul. But the point is, is that they did a GoFundMe account. They, they, this dog, if you go to their website, their Instagram page, you'll see people from around the world supporting this. This was self-funded by them. They asked if they could put a bench there. And they would make a donation to the town to the left of the water fountain with the doggy fountain. That was paid for by Jack's World. So it's, I think it was a win-win for the town and also for Jack. Let's move into Department of Public Works. Some simple things, but are big things. Number one is the, the bin, the supply bin, the the storage bins. Why is this important? Because of the product that's in there. When we pick it up, we don't push it all over the earth. So we actually save money in the long run. I'm excited about that. To the right, far right is a leaf compost bin that we built. Right now, it's only being used by the town of North Beach. In the past, we would go by and we would pick up leaves in the ditch lines and stuff like that. And they would be disposed in the dumpster, not any longer. They're actually put in this compost site in Chesapeake Bounty. And there's been some other farmers that come in and get the leaves. They're using their compost sites. So we have goals to grow that, but right now it's mainly for the town leaves, which makes sense to me. Why send them to a landfill when we can do something that's going to be beneficial? Some of my gardens, obviously we have our signs up. We have a lot of coi. We've been maintained. We had that cleaned out this year. It is a huge attraction to our town. All of the fish you see have been donated either by telling us or by showing up one day. But the coys are, I tell you, when the weather's nice, there's 10, 15 kids surrounding this pond at any given time. There's people walking through the park, sitting on the park bench, reading, talking. It's just a great, great park for our town. The next item is through the Department of Public Works again. But one of my goals when I was running for mayor was to stand up a flood mitigation committee. And that's what we did. We have volunteers in our town. And the raising of 261 was a part of it. You know, the burn was a part of it. The living shoreline was a part of it. But then what we decided was I wanted to do something that hasn't been done yet. We have an eight foot pipe. As you can see it, you see the photos inside. That was completely, not completely, it was filled with 185 tons of debris. 185 tons was cleaned out. That goes from the Boys and Girls Club. If you look at the picture, it goes over to Fifth Street and then down Fifth Street to the pump. Well, we just opened that up to be able to hold more water because as you know, that area is low, the bay is right there to the right. It's in the flood plain. So it has helped. It's not the end all be all. The flood committee is working with the environmental finance center to get a flood plan that we're going to have for the complete town, both for storm and also for tidal. One of my goals was to address it. We're going to continue to improve it and you'll see more improvements as we go along. But this alone was a big, a big job. And we partnered with Calvert County. We met with them. We said, hey, listen, your stuff's dumping into this. We need you out. And they split it with us 50 50. So that was a wonderful day in the town of North Beach. The next item, we're 95% done of replacing our, our water meters. There's more detail to that that DPW can tell you. But what we're seeing is, and you'll see that on the second page after this, is that where our readings are more precise. There's a lot of places that are, the dollar amount's going down because we, our goal was to, you know, implement the water conservation. You know, people, we, we need to get back to make sure we're taking care of our environment. So we started this and we went from, I think, six to five this year. And, and again, I might be a little bit off and I apologize. Maybe it's I think it was 65, maybe five or six. Well, I apologize, but it's in there. But more importantly, if you go to the second page, Paul, if you're experiencing a high water bill, give DPW a call. We're teaching and educating individuals how to reduce the use of water, but we'll come out and we'll test your house out. We'll, 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 we'll come out, we'll look at the beater, we'll look at the flow, we'll look at everything. And what we're finding right now, 100% of the calls we received since we started this has been something a homeowner could fix. Or it's because of somebody being there that they didn't think they were in the shower for two hours. Or it was a sprinkler system that had a hole in it. Or it was many reasons, but the point is we were able to let them know that it's, it's on your side. So look at these areas and every single time they were able to correct it. Also, along the waterfront, you see those new light poles? We removed them. There's 28 of them. We have more efficient, safer light. They look beautiful. And what we were able to do was there's 28 lights. We put them in this a bit to bid out. And we had a contractor, I believe from either South Carolina or Pennsylvania, I can't remember, but they were a good, I think it was South Carolina, paid us $5,050 for those lights. So we didn't throw them in the dumpster. We reinvested the money back into repairs. If you go to the next page, Paul, you'll see the lights on the ground right there. You'll see an old sweeper. You'll see an old truck. We did an old tent. We recycled the old water meters. We're trying to do what we can to control the cost of our town. Nothing is off the list. The question is why? Why are we doing this? What do we have to do to get better? And we're working hard to make that a continued effort. Moving on to the next one, financially. We adopted the constant yield rate. Trash remained the same. There it is. I'm sorry. Minimum water was reduced from six to five. So I made that correct. So thank you so much. Our goal with the water is that you pay for what you use. There's no abuse. You, you know, the, the hose doesn't stay on in the yard. You're, we're more, we're concerned about our water aquifers. And you can see the other healthy living grant. That is something the town helps administer, but it goes to the whole county. It's not just for North Beach, but we do have North Beach residents that do get it. We are not in control of who gets it. It, it is another agency that handles that. We just help administrate it. All right, Paul, move on. I'm almost done, guys. I'm almost done. Again, it talks about the Healthy Homes Program, seven energy audits, 13 referrals, two in North Beach, three in Las B, one in Chesapeake Beach. That's you got it. All right, zoning. Just some of the numbers you can see what's going into the Board of Appeals, what's going to the Planning Commission, the miscellaneous zoning. The critical error reports, so you can see what the zoning is doing. On the next page, code enforcement, guys, we're here to support and work with residents. We're not here to find, we're not here to shut down. We're not here to tax. We're here to work with residents. You know, and, and, and you'll see a new door hanger coming out that we changed to make sure it's, it's more legible. You can understand it. We have neighbors working with neighbors. It's a process. We are not big brother trying to make people do things that, that shouldn't be done. It's based upon our code or zoning. But we're working with people. We give them a time. Some people get frustrated, but we, we're not here to cause pain and anguish to people. We're here to support them and come up with a solution, work as a team. All right, Paul. Community conservation. I'm telling you, I know, I know if there's anybody can't wait till COVID is over is Lisa. The rain barrels, the education, and the owl program, the bat houses. If you see over there by the Boys and Girls, so the lower picture down by the aisles, that's a bat house. I have one I'm going to be installing at my house. They eat, again, Lisa can post this and send it to me, but I, I think it's like 100 or 200 mosquitoes a night, which I can always use. We have the trees. I mean, there's a lot of things you're going to see coming up from Lisa and the community conservation. All right. Town business celebrations. At Grow Yoga. Remember, this is 2020, folks, not January this, it's 2020. The Cole Penguin celebrated 10 years. The Fast Stop reopened. If you haven't been in there, it's absolutely, they've done an amazing job. The staff is great. We have new owner operators or the beer garden. And then the Bay Shop opened October 2020. So a lot of things are happening in the town of North Beach. The Shirt Shack right now is online. We promote it. We, we, you can get all your North Beach gear. Just click on the link. We have it on our website. We have it on our Facebook page. We have it on our email. We have it on our signatures. We have it everywhere. You know, we want to be proud and show people that, hey, so what we did was we partnered up with them. You order from them, you pay them. It all is handled through where your spirit, it doesn't go through the town. It goes to where your spirit. Promoting the town businesses. I will stand up against any municipality out there, any county out there, any world out there that nobody does more for our businesses than us. Even during the pandemic, as you can see, sorry, beach is closed, but the businesses are open. And I got some numbers to show you. We do the campaigns. We do the educational for grants, for money, for funding. We brought in EDC. We've done, we've done calls with EDCs. Our goal is to make sure that we remain a walking, family-friendly town. And we support our local businesses. We are in publication after publication. We're on Fox 5. We do a lot to promote our amazing businesses. And if you click the page on the web, visit maryland.com, North Beach has a second most clicks. Next page, Paul. Out of Calvert County Attractions. Calvert Cliffs is number one, but look at us. We tripled Chesapeake Beach in everything else. People are finding our businesses. They're finding, we're roots and tides. I mean, it just, it's endless. I, I could go on forever. And I say that to let you know that our goal is to make sure our businesses is going to make it through this COVID. We're going to do everything we can to help them get through this COVID. Let's move on to next one. That one, I'm not going to go great detail. It's a snap, it's a snapshot of, of the stats of, of you know, site content, like our homepage had 68,621 clicks. When somebody clicks on there, they're able to see our businesses. They're able to see our waterfront. They're able to see our VRBOs. They're able to see our government. They're able to see everything. As you get through, you'll see the page, page views. You'll see the users, the months and so forth, the high users and so forth. Some of it's obvious. But our, our website's out there, Dawn, and, and, and I know, I think Kelly helps with this. I know, I know with the events, Stacy and, and all our staff are involved in this. So take a look at that. Instagram, Facebook. The numbers are there. Look at our followers, 12,587. We have 2,000 residents and I'm rounding up or down. We don't know yet. 3774 on Instagram and 1,300 on Twitter. Look on Instagram, we have some posts get engagements over 2,000. Why does that matter? It matters when a business says, should I come to North Beach? What are they going to do for me? Well, I would tell you this, if you think it goes somewhere else, tell me what they're doing for you. Because it won't be a comparison. All right, outreach and public, public relations. We, we do the, the resident guide once a quarter. You get it. You can find it at the post office. When the town hall's open, you can find it there. You can find it on, on, on social media. You can find it on our website. You can find it on our, on our, you name it. It's out there. It's a resident guide. It's not full of fluff. It's full of facts and stuff that you need to know. We're very proud of that. You can see that we did the flush disc, don't flush this. You can see one of our DPW members there. Every, every week, twice a week, they go around to inspect because we're still having issues with people putting grease in wipes and products down that shouldn't be there. I know nobody does, but somehow they end up in there. And every week, the DPW has to go clean them out. You got to stop it. It's money being thrown out the window because of laziness. The don't litter. No buts about it. Don't litter. We're, you're going to see more of that. We have a lot of new initiatives that we're going to be working with in the town. Definitely, we need to address that. You probably see me around every Monday and every Friday and I complained the whole time about cigarette butts. But you know, it is, we, we're going to work on this. So publication wise, you can see that here. I think we do, you know, we do our best. Next page, outreach and public relations. I had the pleasure before COVID hit to meet with the Boys and Girls Club. Absolutely amazing group. Joy does an amazing job over there with her staff. We have the text notifications. We're up to 633 subscribers to receive text messages from us. The banner, also the lights on the front of the building. We're doing everything we can for outreach and stay connected with our residents. Though we're a tiny, listen, we're .34 square miles. We have 15 miles of paved road. We don't have a stoplight. We have less than 2,000 residents. We want to continue to get better to communicate with all residents. Greenwood Avenue to Atlantic Avenue. We want to make sure everybody is on the same page. You know what's going on. We will continue to get better. Supporting the community. I don't think I need to mention Deputy Gilmore's name in here. She's here throughout this. Giving a birthday present, saving an owl, plugging into a homeowner's house. The deputies wore pink. Our deputies play a big role in our town and, and they're out with the residents. They know the residents. They talk to the residents. And we're going to continue to push that to make sure we have community policing there out there. And we're going to continue to push that to make sure we have community policing. They're out there talking to people. Down on the lower right, you'll see Abigail. Abigail uh, donated her time for a week along the waterfront to learn all the different things that go on. And if you ever like to find out everything that goes on, talk to Abigail. She, uh, she learned a lot that week, but Abigail's been around, as Mickey said earlier. Um, she's a huge, a huge contributor to our town. Uh, she knew there was a lot of work. Um, I, I had the pleasure of filling in, not the pleasure because somebody got COVID, which they did, which obviously was not the good thing. But our staff really does a lot. Our, our police force, our fire department. Um, we, we support our fire department with a donation every year. Um, the um, uh, the National Idiot Out is being held now at the fire department. I mean, there's a lot of things that, we have a lot of volunteers around here. All right, twenty twenty Polar Blunge. I know I keep thinking of this Polar Plunge. It didn't happen, but this was a year ago. We had, we raised seven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. All that was donated uh, to the ladies of charity, which obviously this year came in handy feeding the hungry. We had twenty sponsors, over three hundred plungers. Um, I know myself and Mickey, uh, I think that's it for the council members. Uh, we, we will continue to do it. Paul, Paul, no, Paul said he would watch.
I was there, but I didn't go.
Gwen says she's going to do it next year and so did Greg. I mean, I'm pretty sure.
I promise.
Yeah. Um, and then you'll, you'll get to the right is the check that we were able to give them. Uh, the sponsors are in the middle. We have a new banner being done for that. I'm not going to tell you who was dressed up in that costume, but I hope she comes back next year and does it again. As we go down, we have Halloween like you've never seen. I'll tell you, staff comes up with some crazy ideas. We, we want it, listen. We know we're in COVID. We know that it's a pandemic, but we wanted our youth to get outside. And we knew that we could do it safely. We knew that we would, mainly for North Beach residents. And I truly believe they had a blast. Uh, we saw, we saw parents wearing masks. We saw six, six foot away. We, you know, you see some people that don't, but the point is overall was a very successful. We encouraged posting of the photos, you know, North Beach Halloween to win prizes. It was a great time. The next page is the Christmas lights. We made some changes this year. Um, uh, you know, uh, the leader of this is our new official waterfront manager, uh, Bud Hunt. And he really ran with it. We made some changes and put some stuff on the beach this year. You're going to see new changes next year. Um, we had the, the holiday lights map that uh, Councilmember Tron Kohn came up with and Dawn and, 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 and somebody else or whoever else Dawn put it together. But the final page is where I think, and I couldn't tell you how many comments I had. I had the pleasure of riding around with Mrs. Claus and Santa Claus and seeing the, the kids light up and the faces and the smiles and you know, we, we could not have the, the, the parade this year, the annual pack carpenter holiday parade. But we wanted to do something. So um, we talked about it. We came up with this idea. And we cruised the town for four hours. That's a long day, guys. Um, we, and Mrs. Claus was giving out the candy canes. I was the driver, which probably I would be fired next year if we do it. Um, it was a great time. The, the Santa Claus, the kids got to put their, the letters into the mailbox for Santa Claus. And every parent thanked us. Every parent was thankful. And then Santa Claus was so excited, he came back a second time, but it was on a fire truck. He didn't trust me to drive him around again, so he got on a fire truck that time. And our fire department did absolutely amazing a job. But it just shows you what a small town can do when you come together. And the last, but not least, is the first sunrise of twenty twenty-one. And that is by Brooke. And I, is it Kida? I, I apologize. I probably screwed that up and I know her very well and I messed it up, but she has a great Facebook page. She does amazing photos of the town of North Beach. This was the first sunrise of twenty twenty-one. We are far from getting out of this pandemic, but what I will promise you is that we're going to continue to have success in our town. We're going to continue to work hard and we're going to continue to err on safety, be patient. Understand that, you know what, we're in this together. We all live here. So whatever we do as an elected body will affect us too. So I hope you see that the town did not shut down. COVID did not shut us down. COVID did not stop us. We responded, we pivoted and we kicked butt. Twenty twenty-one, excuse me, twenty twenty was a year that we will never forget, but I'm very proud of staff and our residents for having a successful year. So that is the state of the town. I know you're probably tired of me talking, so I apologize, but Dawn, thank you so much. Dawn rocked it. She was amazing through this process. She has a whip. She was on it. Mayor, you need this, you need this, you need this, you need this, you need this. I think she did an amazing job. Um, this is on our website. This will be on, 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 uh, board docs. It is out there for everybody to look at. I hope you can appreciate the hard work. I will now turn it over to council reports. Who would like to, who is unmuted? Jane, you're unmuted. Can you start, please?
Sure, sure. Um, I want to get a shout out to the Environmental Committee who were the beginners of the living shoreline and the berm, and we helped former mayor push on that road to get it fixed so that they would ebb and flow out there and we hope and keep our fingers crossed that that's the way it's going to be. And, and so I, my committee met last, this month, and it was really a good to see them. And I think Charlie Poole is going to be a really great addition to um, our town. We're going to put him to work. He is a, he has a and I, I don't know what it's, he called, what it's called, but anyway, he's a municipal tree person. And he has a, a card that says so. So that's pretty good. And just one personal note, I get my last COVID shot tomorrow.
Congratulations.
Uh-oh.
All right, Mickey is unmuted. Excuse me, Daddy is unmuted.
This, this is more personal, but North Beach has a new resident.
Oh.
This is my daughter Charlotte, Charlotte Rose Hummel. She is today at one month old.
Congratulations, Mickey.
That's all for me.
So we're up one resident, we're up to two, two thousand and one now. All right. Uh, Gwen, Gwen is unmuted.
Good to see everybody here tonight. And Mickey, congratulations. What a beautiful baby. Um, and Mayor, that uh, you know, I'm still kind of digesting just what you shared there. Um, it's a little bit, you know, a little bit emotional about it because twenty twenty has been, was uh, just such a tough year. Um, tougher for some than others, but I know everybody had some kind of challenge in, in some way. And um, but seeing the, the resilience and the perseverance and the ability to still accomplish things uh, in light of the difficulty and the obstacles is, is really inspiring. And uh, I'm just so proud of our, of our staff. Um, and just honored to be part of this council and this work and, and of this town. And we can do all that in, in twenty twenty. It's just uh, amazing to think of what can be accomplished, you know, as we go forward and, and uh, just seeing that sunrise was symbolic of that. So uh, excited for what's ahead.
I agree. I agree. Thank you so much. Uh, Greg.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, hello, everyone.
Hey, Greg.
I don't have a whole lot to say, just uh, let everyone, to see everyone is still doing well. Things are quite busy on the Legislative Committee. Uh, I was gonna give a report tonight, but uh, got a little busy with the grandkids, so I didn't get a chance to finish it up. But anyway, well, Jane and I'll have something for you all next month. On how well things are progressing forward.
Thank you.
Other than that, thanks uh, to everyone that uh, decided to join us tonight and congratulations also to Mickey. And uh, look forward to seeing everyone again soon.
Thank you. Last but not least, Paul.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Just like to echo what Gwen said earlier that uh, twenty twenty was an impossibly challenging year. And even with that, uh, the staff, the mayor, the council, all the residents just pulled together and, and just did some amazing things this year. So uh, it's absolutely amazing. And as Gwen said, just so proud to be, be part of the, the whole institution here that is, that is North Beach. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I cannot thank everybody and appreciate everybody hanging in there. I know it's a little longer tonight, but uh, get a chance, take a look at the uh, state of the town. Dawn did an amazing job and I really didn't do it justice because of what I had to go, you know, how long I had to go, but I'm telling you, it's it, it, we could have probably added another twenty, thirty pages on there, but I appreciate that. All right. So uh, we're at the end. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, it, it looks like Ron had something he would like to say.
Oh, okay.
I'll look at it.
Good evening. Couple of points I'd like to make. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Oh, Ron's speaking. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Um, with regard to the businesses, I was concerned as we started getting into the pandemic that our, our businesses were going to have some difficulty. So I, I put an email out to all of them, indicated your rent is not to be a concern. Take care of your staff, keep the business going. And I'll tell you this, to the, to the last item, to the last business, no one was late at all during the entire year of twenty twenty. Everybody paid their rent on time. All the staff was paid and some of our staff, some of their staff are some of our tenants. So they were paid and they were able to pay rent. So that was, that was something that surprised the heck out of me and it just continued as if nothing was going on to, to, to affect it negatively. So appreciate the town fathers and mothers and your marketing department. They did a hell of a job.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that too, Bron.
Our, our office building, it has been, we lost some tenants, but picked up some tenants. And it remains full. And I don't know if you are aware of it, but we have brought in a very prominent member of our community in Calvert County, and that's Reverend Han. He's now one of our tenants. Were you aware of that?
What's that?
Reverend Han is one of our tenants at the office building. He is, he is a special business that's related to his uh, uh, war on hunger and they're working out of our office building. When it got to uh, uh, Sweet Sue's, it was a business uh, termination because the family just got tired of it with their family demands. And we have it now, a very, very prominent and, and trained person running it. So there's not going to be a hiccup there at all. And one last thing, we, we still have the shops and the hotel boutique hotel on the horizon. We will continue working on that and we will get it done. Again, thanks for the support from the town and particularly again, I'll say it again, your marketing department, they do an outstanding, outstanding job. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ron.
You got it.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much. And uh, I, I, I knew Mr. Russo, we talked about it before, but I was not going to bring that up, what you did for the businesses. I figured that was uh, that was better you say that than me. So thank you so much. Um, all right, let's go back to uh, a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
So move second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Go later.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.